All set? All right. I'll call to order this meeting of the Whiteland Town Council for September 12, 2023. Please stand for the fudge, please.
Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Deb.
Laura Flory?
Yes.
Brad Goedecker?
Here.
Dave Hawkins?
Here.
Richard Hill?
Here.
Joe Saylor?
Here.
All present.
Uh, invocation.
I would like to be in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we gather here today in your presence to conduct the business of the town. We ask for your blessing and guidance. Help us to support the town in the best manner possible. In your name we pray. Amen.
Order the business for the day. Does anyone have any additions, attractions? Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, it's just a good heads up.
Okay.
Under her report, there is a purchasing policy resolution. It would be appropriate to consider part of what she's going to present.
Okay.
Just want to give you the heads up.
Do you want to do that under new business or do you want to do it under?
Just under her report.
Okay. Anybody have any issue with that? All right, we'll plan on adding that. Thank you, David. All right, minutes August 8, 2023.
I just got a comment on, on, uh, nothing needs to be revised or anything. Deb, on voucher packet, uh, where I asked about the water APV, the, on the third one down. When you, you've got on there, you explained the answer. Would you go ahead and start putting your answer in there so that we can remember how it was explained?
Yeah.
Please. Something I had.
Anything else on, uh, minutes?
I'm moved to accept.
Motion to accept, sir.
Second.
Second. Um, vote by acclamation, please. All those in favor of approval, minutes August 8, 2023, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, hearing none, motion passes. Voucher packet, September 12, 2023. I didn't have any questions on it.
I have any issues?
All right, any motions?
Accept voucher packet, uh, 9:12, 23.
Sir, second.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Vote by acclamation, please. All those in favor of approval of voucher packet, 9:12, 23, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion. Uh, financial reports, please, Deb.
We have, uh, current balance of the general fund is $323,950.77. And water offering is now $426,948.28. Sewer utility offer is $602,346. We have, um, I handed you, uh, I missed, uh, I just can't. And I have Stephen talked to Stephen.
And what was provided to you is part of a report that county, LTF, provided that provides certified net AVs with town and the fire district portion, uh, NAVs. And what's noteworthy is that for the, the town portion without the fire district, uh, portion that's outside of the corporate limpets, we increased by approximately 15% the NAV of the town from what was last year, 262 million, to what is now 302 million. Of course, we're rounding, uh, for paid 2024. So that's, uh, obviously a positive thing for the town and its taxpayers. And similar, I would note that the combined total that includes the fire territory outside the town, it increased as well, but it increased approximately 41 million, uh, as opposed to 40 million inside the town, which indicates that virtually all except $1 million of the increase in the fire district, all of the 40 million came from inside the town because the town is within the fire territory as well. So, um, this will presumably relate to the discussion that we'll have momentarily concerning an excess levy appeal. And I'm sure that others are prepared to talk to you further about that. You may remember that last year we had a similar situation, although I think our, uh, net AV increased even further than the 15%. I don't remember precisely what that percentage was. And at that time, to kind of mitigate some of the potential negative implications that can go along with that, we did two things. We sought an excess levy and we issued a GO bond, uh, to help provide some additional support for the town finances and take advantage, if you will, of the increase in NAV. So I don't know if there's anything more you wanted to talk about there, Debbie, but that's what I was prepared to talk about.
Do we need to take up the matter of, uh, the excess levy appeal? Stephen?
I would have not been involved with that.
That's coming up in the new business.
Okay, never mind. All right, um, we have no old business, so let's move on to new business. Ordinance 2023-13. Proposed budget.
So these numbers that you received, it looks a little different this year because we have the past where we have the itemized budget for who, as we've been working with, we've been finding it with different areas of the past. We've been simply, throughout the fire budget management, there's been some things that we've discovered that haven't quite made it easy to just say, here's your budgets and this is what we're going to do. So we've been trying to work with ready financial, but what we have in front of us is just an introduction that the numbers have been padded, um, to, as we start to kind of doubt, um, you know, where our pads need to be renewed and get down to true numbers. Nikki Bell's here from Ready Financial, but kind of discussed that. What we're looking at doing here in the next month is just kind of getting through numbers. So I'll let Nikki kind of take over from there and have you guys answer any questions.
Uh, like Carmen said, Nikki Bell with Ready Financial Group. Um, so the numbers that you received, like Carmen said, were padded. And one of the reasons that we do that is so that we have flexibility to be able to shift budgets around from, so like the general bond to the general bond or, you know, another fund that has sufficient funding that we're able to make the budgets around. So over the next month, um, we're gonna continue to work on that with Deb and Carmen, actually finalize those budgets, um, on each bond level, weed out the pads, get those all taken out. So you will see more of the finalized budget the next meeting. Not only are the budgets padded or inflated, we also, we also do that to the levy, um, the property tax levy. So you see a property tax levy amount on there. We inflate that a little bit. Um, one of the recommendations by the state is to also inflate that to make sure that the town receives the most, um, property tax levy that the town can receive. Once it's adopted and goes through the state's review, the state will cut that back to the max that the town can get. So there's, there's a limit or a level that the town can reach, um, and the state will make sure that it does not exceed that amount. This year, the state growth quotient grew 4%. By state statute, it was limited to 4%. So your property tax levy and your max levy, um, one of your main revenues was limited to a 4% growth. So your budget meeting or adoption for the budget will be October 10th. That's what we've advertised here. Um, we should have all those finalized by then and hopefully a little bit earlier. You know, you're not getting it the day you're adopting it, um, just for review purposes. That notice, as Stephen Carmen just mentioned, there's a levy appeal. We've included that in the notice. If you don't include it, you can't go after it. So just as, as a safeguard, we did include that already in the notice. So if it's approved, it will stay, um, but if you guys choose not to, that will be backed down. But we have to kind of set the budgets at a certain level. Another thing, going back to the budgets, we have to set it at a certain level. Once you advertise it, you can't increase what you're gonna adopt. So we try to make sure we're not gonna adopt any more than what we advertised. We can only decrease the budget that we advertise. So that's why we have, another reason why we have those pads, to have the flexibility, um, in multiple budgets. Happy to answer any questions? If there's anything?
Um, I think we may have an issue of council members not being here for that meeting. On October 8th, if, has that notice already been published or if we needed to reschedule that?
This notice was submitted on Gateway, which act as the, the notice to taxpayers to application for October 10th, on Tuesday. It may be.
Do we have to have more than three people?
I believe you have to have a majority. I'm, I'm.
Right, just a majority.
Yeah, so.
So if we have three people here, we'll be fine.
Now, the, on the agenda tonight, we have, it's scheduled as a public hearing tonight. Is that actually going to occur tonight?
Yes, public hearing should occur tonight. So, um, for that process, we would close the regular council meeting, open up the public hearing, listen to any comments, close the public hearing portion and reopen the regular council.
Right. My, I guess my real question is, the October 10 meeting, is there a requirement, the notice be given of that meeting?
Uh, that is within this notice, kind of for tonight's meeting, the notice to taxpayers. Um, there is no public hearing or public comment regarding the budget at the October 15th meeting. Um, that's tonight's.
Okay. Do you know if that meeting date can be adjusted at this point?
Everything has to be completed by November 1st.
Right.
Yeah, I would, I would have to reach out to the DLGF and the state to see if that October 10th can be, um, changed. I, I know we advertised for the October 10th meeting. I think if we, you know, have 10 days prior to that October 10th, are, are able to make an amendment to this, we should be all right. But I, I would want to confirm with DLGF and the state.
October 10th. I guess what's the council's pleasure as far as that goes? We can act with a quorum, um, as, but if, you know, if council members who wouldn't be able to be here are concerned and want to try and reschedule for when they could be, we should probably do it sooner on than later because of the notices.
I, I don't have a problem with the council acting in my absence. But like, I mean, I am, you know, hesitant to want to miss a meeting. I mean, of course, I, I want to be here to, you know, do my, do my role. Certainly, I can be available virtually if that is of any use. Um, I can make it a point to, to do that, but I don't have a specific problem with the council taking action in my absence.
Do you have any issue with it, Mr. Watson? All right, I think we're gonna just leave it at that.
Yeah, another thing I want to point out, um, if you guys do decide to change the council meeting day, um, the excess levy appeal that was brought up earlier, the deadline to submit that to the state is October 19.
Okay.
So hopefully a meeting prior to that, if that's decided.
I think what, it sounds like we should be able to just keep it as simple. All right. In that case, I suppose I'll, I'll open a public hearing. Open a public hearing as regards ordinance 2023-13, budget ordinance. If there's anyone that wishes to be heard on the night. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. This just introduction or are we taking action tonight?
You don't need to, as far as I'm concerned, unless someone's aware of two votes being required.
For the.
For the, for the budget ordinance.
No, um, we'll, uh, today.
Okay. All right, we'll just treat it as introduction. Um, does anyone have anything on it before we move on to the next piece of business? All right, hearing none, we will move on to a discussion on the excess levy appeal.
The same thing on this, and Nikki can probably speak to this, um, obviously with our experience we had last year with the growth and we've had growth over the last couple of years, but haven't necessarily taken advantage of the growth appeals or tax levies, or levy appeals, um, which has made the tax rate go down significantly. And even with our growth that we had last year and the tax levy appeal that we've had, our tax rates still went down. Um, so we need to make sure that we're maximizing all tax levy appeals that we can, those appeals and such, um, to make sure that, that we're still getting enough money to, or getting the money that we, giving our fair share of the pie, I guess, is, is how we hear it discussed in the past. Um, so in addition, I know that we're also starting to look at an emergency, um, tax levy appeal after the tornado and things like that. It opens up some opportunities, um, for us to try to maximize our dollars. And so I'll let Nikki kind of speak to it as he is the, the financial consultant and if there's any questions you guys have.
Thank you, Carmen.
Um, so the, the tax excess levy appeal that I'm discussing, um, the town qualifies for three years of appeal. It's one of the appeals out there that the state has. The town qualifies for that when the town's three-year average exceeds the state's three-year average of assessed value growth by more than 2%. So the town's growing in excess faster than the rest of the state. And to keep up with the growth and, um, additional expenses from that growth, one way to capture additional revenues through these excess levy appeals is through your growth appeal. Um, I mentioned earlier, the deadline for that is October 19th. So at the next council meeting, we'd come with, come to you with, um, an appeal document to review, look over and approve. Um, after that, we'd send it off to the state. What this will do, um, tax rate wise, include, with the appeal included, um, I've used these new assessed value numbers that, um, Deb passed out in the green and the 4% growth from the max levies. And I'm projecting that the 2024 tax rate for the town being, um, .4620, so just over 46 cents. Versus 2023's town's tax rate of .4656. So it's very close. It's actually a slight decrease even by doing this appeal. So, um, it'll generate additional revenue for the town, um, not only in property taxes, but also income taxes. Um, that's actually a year delay. Income taxes is based primarily on the property tax levy that the town does. So, um, in 2025 is when you'll see an impact to income taxes from the levy appeals.
So even if we were successful on this levy appeal, our tax rate is still going to actually decrease?
Yeah, it's staying pretty level. Um, it's a slight decrease, might not even be noticeable, um, on the decrease side of things. Um, but yeah, it's going from .4656 to .4620. So, um, a .003, .004 percent de, or cents decrease.
Well, it seems to me if we're providing police and fire to 15% more assessed value, that the 4% that the state's giving us out of the property taxes it collects is a little shy. So, um, does not mean, it's certainly not an increase. Um, I would be in favor of it. Um, we have to provide those services and our people expect us to provide those services. So, uh, that, that money is basically to other municipalities or school districts or the state otherwise. So, um, I think it would be worth doing the appeal to try and have some of that come, stay, stay local, basically.
How much does it cost? I mean, what, what, is there a monetary value to appeal this or is it just part of the process?
So there's some time involved in, in completing the documents, but outside of that, there's no cost from the state side of things to apply for it. I, I don't know the cost off the top of my head, but it, it would be minimal. I, and I can, I have a mouth on how much the appeal would be, if you would like, um, to know that. And, and the town's in a, uh, different situation than any other unit across the state. The town actually has two max levies. It has a town civil max levy and it has the fire max levy. Um, both of those do qualify for this appeal, so there'd actually be two appeals, one for each max levy. The town would be able to appeal for approximately $108,972 in additional levy or property taxes. And then the, on the fire side, the fire, um, levy would be able to appeal for approximately $18,378.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any motions as to?
I'll make a motion to pursue the excess levy appeal.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Vote by roll call, please, Deb.
Laura Flory?
Yes.
Brad Goedecker?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Passes 5 to 0.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I think we have Edit Tax Capital Improvement Plan Resolution 2023-05.
So on this, um, this is the ceded, still here though, Carmen noted, the county economic development income tax. And included for us to use those dollars, we're getting approximately $12,800 a month. Um, that's just kind of being put into a, a fund at the moment. Um, but in order to use these dollars, you have to adopt a resolution and provide a capital improvement. Uh, the only restrict, well, there's a restriction on this, that 75% of these dollars have to go towards economic development. Uh, the other 25%. So in the resolution, there is a, a capital improvement plan that we started. We didn't really have one. We put together a couple of plans and working with Stephen in that to kind of pull that together along with this resolution. Um, so it is basically, Nikki, vague. You just have to kind of identify some projects and maybe how those projects would fit into the project. So just kind of the deal of some of the capital improvement projects, um, have the, um, the public safety building, a super plant upgrade, some roundabouts, um, different technical infrastructure, some comprehensive planning and master planning that we have on the horizon. Um, it's just opportunities of, of ways that we can use these dollars. So this year, we're looking at a, just under $160,000 in ceded money and a little bit more next year. Um, so we're, I think in the budget numbers, we are estimating that last year's dollars or this year's dollars are reflecting, and next year is about $340,000. So obviously not enough to really make a huge ding in a capital improvement project, um, like a, you know, building a, a public safety building, um, but at least it's a start and it's another bucket that we can pull dollars from. So, um, with this, we just ask for approval of the resolution so we can, um, start putting the dollars to work.
Carmen, we never had this before or?
The, the ceded, the county just adopted their tax appeal like two years ago, I believe it was. Um, and it was, they used it to help primarily with, um, funding of, I believe, and their program infrastructure.
So it's very new and we're, okay, so we're, we're not like 10 years down the road and we're just getting involved.
There's like a city capital improvement plan. We've been lacking, we've had like projects we know about, but not really putting them on paper and identifying funding sources as well as timeline of when we want to get those projects done. And so that's been a priority of mine is just to get them down on paper, start putting some numbers to run and then figuring out how we're gonna get these funded and paid for and actually the projects happen.
Okay, great. Well, thanks for your efforts.
If you look at your front line board, line number 2209, it shows you how much we've collected so far. It started January of this year. So, I mean, we just haven't been able to spend it because we had to have the plan.
So that money's just been idle then since?
And there's restrictions on spending it anyway, so.
And probably to any other tax funds that you have, you have to appropriate those monies as well.
Pardon me for the ignorance on the subject here. So what is it? Because like, we're not, we're not advocating for spending that money now. I mean, it's still collecting. So what is, what exactly is this doing?
It just gives us the ability to spend it on the capital improvements that are in our plan.
But like, we're not committed to anything right now, like it just?
No, no, I think what Stephen was saying was that we would have to appropriate, probably spend it. This just creates a plan that gives us the ability to then appropriate.
I don't, from Carmen, it didn't look like we had this matrix established to, to gain that money or to qualify. But now we have that, so we can partake in this.
Right, as a statutory requirement for being entitled to those edit funds, this has to be adopted to be entitled to receive it. Now, apparently they've already started receiving some, um, but by statute, you're not supposed to receive it until you've adopted this capital.
And this is a working live document that's added to, deleted, updated as needed?
I think it's a good planning tool, as I'm sure all of you understand, to help, uh, guide the town in terms of what projects are out there that need some funding and what it's gonna take.
Well done.
Are there any motions as regards Resolution 2023-05?
I'm moved to accept Resolution 2023-05.
Sir, second?
I'll second it.
Vote by roll call, please, Deb.
Laura Flory?
Yes.
Brad Goodecker?
Yes.
David Hawkins?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-05 passes 5 to 0.
Ordinance 2023-11, I think we spoke about this last time, establishing penalties for unauthorized access to town water.
All right, does the council want to, we talked about this in some depth last time. Does it, like an update or do?
Did Mr. Watson go through and create the new, uh, the new version?
Yes, I, I created this, reviewed what we already had in the town code and found the, either some discrepancies or conflicts within some of the existing provisions or some lack of clarity. So tried to clean that up, but then also added some language to make it. or some lack of clarity. So tried to clean that up, but then also added some language to make it clear what additional penalties a person who accesses the town's water without authorization will be subject to. It's essentially found on your second page.
This is hydrants and water pits, water meter pits?
But basically tried to draft it as broad as we reasonably could to not just be limited to hydrants because there's always the possibility that someone might tap into a main outside of a hydrant. Or I didn't really look at it closely as to the language, but potentially you could have a water shut off, excuse me, a water shut off at a property and someone turn it on without authorization, in which case that we might be able to use this statute or this provision.
It would be registered though through their meter if they turned it back on, right?
Well, it depends. It depends on if they, I don't know, if the meter's in there, they might do a jumper and.
Go till they get their bill.
Does this protect like, say this building, if somebody at night was coming and taking up their truck or a tank? Does this include these type of building, municipality buildings of taking water?
It would apply to any tap into our utility that was other town infrastructure. It's the town's. I think you're covered. Subsection A of 5112 on the first page at the bottom.
And I know, I've spoken to Slim about people who put their own tap in ahead of the meter to run their sprinklers and that sort of thing, and it would be helpful to have something explicitly on point.
Have you discovered any additional problems last time, which was brought up or?
Not since this was brought up. The guy took meters out of the hole inside of it all. Hooked his irrigation and service line his house, like the garden hose, wherever you can find. So it kind of, if that would have made potentially backflow into our system, that could have caused.
Contamination.
Right.
Is there penalties from like what he said if we had to flush? The expense would go back to the violation.
In the case of a backflow situation where you had to do flushing?
Or that would go back to the person in violation?
Well, I'm glad you brought it up. I think this seems like Mr. Watson did a good job for us.
Any motions as regards ordinance 2023-11?
Cost for repair. Was that no?
Got a question for Stephen real quick.
Sorry.
I don't see it, but I want to make sure.
Can I be further submitted to a fine equal to the cost for repair or replacement in part of the town?
We're looking at section 5115 and whether that would allow the town to recover costs for flushing and that sort of thing. Arguably, it would. It's not clear on that point, and that could be clarified if we felt that was important. But you could also argue that it would.
I would think that it would. If you end up having to flush all the lines and waste all that water, that's what's required to repair the system. Or restore the system.
I was just thinking something if, like you may have mentioned Slim, to where potentially it wasn't caught and you had to flush or something and contaminated and we had to spend, the town had to spend money to get it back to square, that individual should be held liable for those fees and work and labor and so forth. So I was just asking to make sure that that somewhat is included in this. To your point, I guess it vaguely is or?
If we felt it's important, make sure to address that, I would want to clarify it. Because it's most pointed towards managed waterworks. And that's infrastructure, not lost water itself.
So if we were to add a line at the end of 5115, these costs can, may include but are not limited, or these costs may include the cost of flushing, sanitizing, or otherwise restoring the sanitation of the water, something like that.
Yeah.
Plus there would be a cost of one call now, which is, right, we'd have to notify everybody, which is the system we use to notify people of the water main break or.
Full advisory.
And that's going to be expensive. Right.
I think it's wise to protect the town with something. I mean, just to make sure all our bases are covered.
Am I taking that as a motion to amend by Mr. Hill to add that language?
The question I would have is, are you wanting to take some form of final action tonight? Vote on something tonight, or do you want to give direction to make amendment to be brought back to the next meeting?
Can we vote to pass the church amendment?
It'd be best to have exact language.
So can you pass it first reading tonight and then with the amendment next month?
Well, it takes one reading though, doesn't it?
There's the ordinance.
It takes two readings, but you can suspend the rules if we get the necessary motion to do so. If you wanted to take care of it, we can just.
Type it up real quick.
Type it up right now.
What's the council's direction? I'm fine either way.
You can type it up and I'll go print it off.
Right now and take care of it.
I think if you could add just a couple of sentences, then we could, if it's not too much to ask.
And if you want, you may move on.
All right, we'll come back around to that. Although I already crossed it off. Now I'm going to be confused. All right, we'll move on to Resolution 2023-14, the OAKR grant application matching funds.
Just asking how many projects for you to spend some speed money on. So with, and it doesn't mean that has to happen, but with the OAKR as the middle that we're planning in December for our comprehensive plan update, remember our comprehensive plan is from 2012. So while the older tiers of maybe revise in October. With our OAKR as the middle, we have to provide a letter of where our matching dollar is going to come from. And so we're looking at a $15,000 match and would like to request that the town ceded money be used as matching funds. We'll have about $160,000 maybe over a year, and we're asking for $15,000 of that to the OAKR.
It seems to be exactly what that ceded money is supposed to be used for, so that would tend to make a lot of sense to me. Because since we're getting in like three times, you know, we put in 15 and we get, is it 25%? Okay, so we put in 15 and get 50, have 65 to spend out of the 15 we put in.
To get investment.
A move to accept Resolutions 23-23.
All right, there's a motion.
Second it.
Second. Vote by acclamation on this one, please. All those in favor of Resolution 2023-14, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all right, here, known as the most mysterious. All right, now we are on to the fund that is FHA provisions.
So this is part of the OAKR provision in order to apply for OAKR grants. We must have up here how the act is coming into effect. When we looked back through, we realized that you did not have this, so this is part of the amendment that Stephen put together as far as.
I mean, we're already subject to this pursuant to. I guess this just gives a local cause of action, if you like, in terms of putting it, am I correct on that?
General speaking, yes, I would note that if there is a complaint or a potential violation or alleged violation, ordinance, as I recall, directs enforcement to be handled by the state. We're not going to be directly trying to enforce. We just inform and pass it on to them.
Yep, which I think we pretty much already have to do anyway. Any questions or comments regarding ordinance 2023-12?
So if the state regulates this, then why do we have, why do we locally have to have this?
A lot of these grants, in order to qualify for the grant, they require you to have done something affirmative to say that you're complying with these federal statutes. And, you know, there's usually all sorts of ADA, air housing, you know, so on and so forth. Federal requirements that apply to us whether we have an ordinance or not, but it's basically us saying we have such a policy or whatever in place to comply with federal. Is that accurate?
Right. If you want to get the grant, you have to follow the rules that they impose. They want to make sure that you're on board.
I was reading through that too, because I was trying to figure out ahead of time. Fortunately, Carmen explained that very well. Thank you very much. What's the impetus for this? Because I was like, I thought that was standard policy and procedure. I mean, why are we doing that? But then to be able to have access to the grant, so I mean, I didn't find anything in there that seemed out of line. It just, it seems weird to do something unprompted, but now I understand the method behind it, so I'm at ease with it.
Which again, it's all, we're already subject to it anyway. It's just putting it in place, so.
So do we need to motion then?
Uh, yes.
Motion to accept, approve ordinance 2023-12.
All right, is there a second?
Second it.
Vote by roll call, please, Deb.
Laura Flory?
Yes.
Brad Goedecker?
Yes.
David Hawkins?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-12 passes five to zero for first reading.
Is there a time issue on that that?
The next meeting will be a public hearing for the comprehensive plan that is the middle, so it's wait, but.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules or do we want to wait till next meeting? Pardon?
There'll be one last thing you have to do next month.
A move to suspend the rules.
All right, there's a motion to suspend the rules. Vote by roll call, please, Deb.
I have a second.
Oh, I apologize. Mr. Goedecker, second.
Laura Flory?
Yes.
Brad Goedecker?
Yes.
David Hawkins?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
All right, rules are suspended.
Passes five to zero.
Rules are suspended on ordinance 2023-12. Is there any motion as regards to second reading?
Would you have to open for a public hearing first?
No.
No.
On this, there'll be a later public hearing related to the grant, but not for this particular ordinance.
I move to accept second reading for ordinance 2023-12.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Vote by acclamation, please. All those in favor of second reading ordinance 2023-12, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing non-motion carries. That's a mandatory amendment. I apologize. Let's redo that vote. It's roll call, please. That's one that.
Laura Flory?
Yes.
Brad Goedecker?
Yes.
David Hawkins?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Yes.
2023-12 passes for final reading, five to zero.
Where do we sit, Stephen? Should we move on to administration ops report or are we?
I think I may have it.
Okay.
Read it back to you, looking at the second, you know, the second sentence. Section 51.15 on tampering with or damaging town water infrastructure. And the second sentence starts out by saying, "In addition to any other applicable penalties, any violator of this section subject to the line equal to the cost for the repair and replacement of any portion of the town's waterworks damaged or defaced, comma, and here's where it gets a little bit new, and any and all other costs to restore the proper functioning of the waterworks, comma, including without limitation, the labor and equipment charges for such repairs, restoration and replacements, and the cost of flushing, sanitizing, notifying customers and otherwise restoring the proper functioning of the waterworks."
Sounds good to me.
So I. Procedure.
What about if somebody gets sick from it before it's?
Hang on, Joe.
Oh, sorry.
Dave had a good question about somebody getting sick.
What if somebody in the process, before you find it out, ends up getting sick because of a contamination? That needs to be covered in there too.
I don't know that you can do that.
Yeah, my thought is that that's probably a civil action that should be left to people to deal with civilly rather than the town to get involved with that.
Just a thought and.
It's a good point though.
Yeah.
Okay.
In that case, is there any motions as regards ordinance 2023-11? As amended, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to amend to include the new language?
So be it.
All right, motion to amend, is there a second?
Second it.
All right, is there, let's do a vote by acclamation, please, to add the amendment as read by Mr. Watson.
Don't you have to have a roll call on ordinance?
I don't believe so.
Since it's just amending it, I don't, I don't think that's necessary, particularly if we're going to approve it unanimously.
On the motion to amend, vote by acclamation, please. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all right, motion carries, it is amended to the language that Mr. Watson read into the record. Any other motions? I'm calling for a motion to approve if there is one.
We're going to approve, suspend the rules, approve again, is that correct?
Have we approved? We haven't approved this yet, correct?
Correct. It'd be just first reading right now.
So right now, we're on first reading, so.
I'll move to approve first reading of 2023-11.
Okay.
As amended.
As amended, thank you.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right, vote by roll call at your convenience, please, Deb.
Laura Flory?
Yes.
Brad Goedecker?
Yes.
David Hawkins?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-11 passes first reading, five to zero.
Is there a motion as regards to rules on this?
Move to suspend the rules.
Is there a second?
Second.
Vote by roll call, please, Deb.
Laura Flory?
Yes.
Brad Goedecker? David Hawkins?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Suspension passes five to zero.
Is there a motion as regards to second reading of ordinance 2023-11?
Move to accept second reading.
Is there a second? Okay, Mr. Goedecker, second. Vote by roll call, please, Deb.
Laura Flory?
Yes.
Brad Goedecker?
Yes.
David Hawkins?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-11 passes five to zero.
I think the next one on our agenda is director of administration and director of operations reports, and we have a resolution to consider within that.
So the resolution, and I apologize to the request that I have today, as Stephen and I were talking this morning, I thought that we had something already set where the town manager or town administration agreed to enter into a purchase agreement of $50,000 and below, a small, small purchase policy. But coming to find out, I do recall that meeting and it was a couple of town managers ago, but there was no formal policy or action that was taken actually within our code. So we had a resolution tonight just to basically tie up some reasons and allow for small purchases under $50,000. Obviously, if it's something significant, we're going to be, but.
Basically.
We opened, we opened it up the last time.
I don't think we, well, so the way that the statute reads is that you can have a small purchase policy up to $50,000, but that it has to be a formally enacted policy. Otherwise, you have to use like the request for proposal, request for bid, all the.
Bidding process.
Bazillion hoops you have to jump through. So if we want to have flexibility to make small purchases without having to do RFPs on everything, we have to have a formal policy authorizing basically us to make those purchases.
Can we increase that amount?
No. $50,000 is the cap on the statute.
Right.
Well.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna say, are they still going to get competitive bids even though it's not, you're not going to go through the formal RFQ process? You're still gonna?
I would assume we would get.
Quotes, quotes and so forth? I mean, a minimum of two or three?
Depends. And I think it might be, in kind of response to your question, a good time, Carmen, for you to explain what brought this to, you know, the attention today.
Certainly. So as you know, the fire department's been displaced since the tornado and just trying to figure out what are the next steps for them. The redevelopment commission last month purchased a property at 739 Pearl Street that is diagonally, it's like, what do you buy it for?
200 and something.
200 feet, less than 200 feet away from the fire department. As of right now, the fire department living supporters are what we call a total loss. We're having some discrepancies with our insurance company and trying to work through those. But the bay is salvageable. And so trying to figure out a way to get them back close to home. So we purchased that property last month, the redevelopment commission, and we've been working with insurance on quotes, with taking a construction trailer, making it livable quarters, and what are our options? It's excessive to rent something that we, we're looking at 18 to 24 months potentially to rebuild or to decide what we're going to do if we move forward with public safety building and that. So we need a place for them to stay. We had an opportunity for the Johnson killing rates to be in it. We've worked through Department of Homeland Security and all those titles and acronyms and all of that, but we've come across an opportunity to purchase a trailer that we can put on that property. Now, our code doesn't allow for trailers to be there, but for a temporary situation, it would be allowed. And it would fit on that property. We said a quote for rental, and I put that in, in the proposal I put in writing in tonight, for just $11,000, $15,000, just to rent something from a company. The purchase of the trailer that we're looking at is $33,000. I provided some pictures. It's not brand new, but it's, it can be, it can function. It has three full bedrooms, three bedrooms and dual baths that would allow us to put on that property at 739. It already has utility hookups. There, so it's going to be very minimal extra costs. We just have to kind of start with some footers for the, for the trailer to sit on, but other than that, that piece of property is ready to go. So I did put in here that we are working with the insurance company to see if this is something that, because purchasing it, is it something that can be reimbursed through insurance and or through FEMA? You know, kind of my thought is it's going to save the insurance company money if we buy something, but if we enter and we're finished with it, sell it, and say we sell it for more than what we paid for, it would reimburse the insurance company for anything, you know, reimburse them, kind of thing. So it is something where we're looking at buying in cash, but there's also a potential of getting some reimbursements through insurance or FEMA. My request is to go above that and allow the town administration to work through it and sign a purchase agreement. I think up to $50,000 because my boss is going on a day. He said, well, I'm looking at another trailer. I didn't want to have to come back and say, oh, now, now he has one for $34,000, and I've only asked for $30,000. I don't expect us to spend, the other trailer we were looking at was $35,000. So again, not even coming close to that, but with that small purchase policy, let's ask for $250,000 to enter into a purchase agreement with them, just so we don't have to wait another month and we can get the fire department settled into some more semi-permanent living quarters.
And this is an upgrade and preferred for a chief of house or as opposed to the current status quo?
Yeah, it gets us closer back to the trucks as well. So, I mean, we have one truckload that's over in White Moon right now that's able to fit in the bay. So getting us back over to closer to the ladder truck, the tanker, everything else. So depending on what gets dispatched, we can just walk across the party line and grab the truck.
Okay. Will the, will the guys on duty, spending their time in this dwelling or in the bay with the truck or what, like what are they?
Most of the time, we spend in the dwelling.
Okay.
They can still be training in the backyard, different things like that, so they can have access to the trucks for truck checks and everything else. So you're going to see them going back and forth.
Okay. Thank you.
Joe, to, to my point, Carmen has answered my question about doing her due diligence and, and quote process. I'm fully comfortable with, with what she does professionally, so I have no issue.
And I mean, even if we wanted, even if, and I'm not suggesting this is necessary because I don't think that it is, even if we wanted to.
Maintain, you know, that.
In order to sign these contracts, we still had to approve of them, we would still have to have this policy in place. Otherwise, we would have to go through the other more convoluted purchasing mechanisms.
Carmen's smart. I mean, she's got due diligence.
I don't have any.
And here is the proposed resolution. It's quite simple. It addresses, yeah, take one and pass it down, please. It addresses two issues. One is the small purchasing policy, which I'll summarize as giving two options to the town. One is to invite three quotes, giving persons who, you know, deal in that type of property seven days to respond to the quote, or giving the option of just going to the open market without inviting any quotes or bids and just buying it direct. And this situation with the trailer would be one kind of that would fall into that category. And the second thing that it does, the statute authorizes purchases without bidding and that sort of thing under a few special purchasing situations. And one of those, probably the one that's used by, is if there is a type of property that only one provider sells, for example, if you have a certain type of IT equipment that you want to buy to be compatible with your existing, and there's only one provider of it, that would fall into that exception. There are other special exceptions spelled out in the statute, and this just puts in, in our policies that the town is authorized to use those exceptions that are provided under statute.
Would they have to provide a single source letter or anything like?
Yeah. The statute does say that you're supposed to prepare a memo document.
I think there's a special record keeping on it too.
Yeah, there's, there's record keeping that's required.
Now, by my, my read of this one, Stephen, I think we're the purchasing agency, aren't we?
Yeah, by statute, and you do, I'm sorry. In the town code, we do have oddly enough a few provisions that deal with purchasing. One is it identifies the purchasing agency as being of the town, as being the town council. But it also identifies the purchasing agent as being the town manager, which in our current situation is also the director of administration. And so you're right to observe that this delegates the, or authorizes the, basically the town council to do these things, but also allows the purchasing agent, if it's been authorized by the town council, to basically do the administration portion of it. There's also in our town code, some provisions that I think need to be cleaned up because they potentially are arguably in conflict with some other provisions of the town code that say that all purchases are to be signed by the town council as opposed to the town manager. Because in our town manager provisions, it says that the town manager is to sign those. So I think we ought to review and try and, you know, have a policy that's consistent. But that's also why I drafted this with the purchasing agency, town council, basically being in control of everything.
Okay.
Because I didn't want to change the game, so to speak. Change the policy.
Carmen, one last thing. So if, if in fact you purchase this, there'll be insurance on this, I assume? It'd be covered? Thank you.
I guess my, my question, Stephen, is that if we're the purchasing agency and we want to buy this trailer, do we need to take some action to authorize the purchasing agent?
Yes.
Okay.
Basically, two things that would need to happen tonight. One is to adopt this policy resolution, and then two, to take the next step of directing and authorizing your director of administration to move forward with purchasing it.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. All that in mind, are there any questions, concerns, motions as regards resolution 2023?
Move to accept resolution 2023-15.
Is there a second?
Second it.
There's a motion, second. You're going to vote by roll call, please, Deb.
Laura Fleury?
Yes.
Brad O'Decker?
Yes.
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 Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-15 passes five to zero.
And then the town manager has brought to us kind of a proposal as far as amount not to exceed, I think, $50,000 on this trailer. Is there a motion as far as authorizing that purchase?
I move to authorize town manager. Of the trailer.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Vote by roll call, please, Deb.
Laura Fleury?
Yes.
Brad O'Decker?
Yes.
David Hawkins?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
I just have one more thing. So Ready 2.0 is announced, the recent renovation works, reorganization of a regional area that we were a part of. We were part of the 180 Alliance, which was like from Boone County and the western counties around Marion. That's been reorganized and now include Marion County as well as all the way up to the Anderson MSA, Indianapolis Carmel MSA, and all those surrounding counties, the Donut Counties and that. There's no cost to join. It's called CERA. It's the Central Indian Regional Development Authority. There's no cost to join, but it allows, if we do join, a state that's there and it comes to applying for ready dollars. And I believe they said there's $500 million of potential, of potential money out there for, for municipalities and government entities to apply for. So with that, I'd like to kind of get a okay to proceed, but we'd like to bring back a resolution next month of the bid. We have to adopt their plan as well as the ability to join or to join the CERA group, so.
And this is to seek ready grants?
It is. Barker'sville has already joined Franklin, I believe, last week officially joined, and then Greenwood's got it on their ballot table, so.
I don't really see a downside. I would certainly be in favor of joining and going from there. Thank you. Anything on operations, Slim, or we good?
The only thing that I have is my water pump. Whatever day we can, the water pump that the water is burning up. That thing's a long way out for like six months now. It's in the process of getting ready to replace that. I don't know if you guys know what a well pump is, but that's kind of what it is, but on a mass scale. But instead of it being put back in the ground, we are going to have it reconfigured to where it is above ground, and it's easier for call, all maintenance, all that kind of stuff. This week, it's about $50,000 to replace that and have a can and everything rebuilt. So that's on the list for this month.
All right.
They're supposed to come back tomorrow and start finishing the spring hill, get that finished. They got postponed today due to the rain. They've already milled everything, taken care of all that.
They're moving pretty fast.
Slim, can you get like an extended warranty on that pump?
I'm sure there'll be some kind of warranty on that.
I have a little question on, on some of the, like the tornado stuff, when we lost water in the power or the water towers and stuff, is there any possibility of looking at some sort of double redundancy type back, backflow concept? So we don't, if, if power goes out, that we don't? Is there a possibility of doing like a, a secondary concept or is that feasible?
Actually looking into that right now. So we have a secondary connection.
Okay. Good deal.
So we don't have that problem. But the problem was that there was a leak out at the commercial buildings, and it had so much flow to it that it wasn't letting any water build up into the towers. But then we found that, put everything back, back on go. So then to start filling the towers and everything back up, so the town come back with water.
And then we're looking at getting bids on generators at key locations? Thank you. I knew you were on top of it.
Should we get those either to, either send it today or tomorrow?
Would those be propane or would they be diesel?
That's what we already run out of at the sewer treatment plant, right?
Yeah.
Is diesel? I was out there cutting your fences up. With Terry McLaughlin's truck in the farm field, just imagining how he would feel watching rooster tails of mud go off the side of City of Greenwood's vehicle. Thank you.
We have stationary one coming here, the plan is one coming here, one going to each water tower. This station already has one, has already two through the sewer plant, and then having probably three pull beyond generators for the lift stations. So if it starts to get cool, we can disconnect from that one and go. But they're all going to be wired to just plug it by.
Quick connects.
The others, no messing with wires and rewiring everything, all that.
So that's a transfer switch?
Yes.
Slim, the ones at the water towers, wouldn't it be better to have them on natural gas or, or something like that?
Not necessarily, because you're kind of in the same boat. What happens, something I thought about was, you know, when I come in that night and was trying to get over to the street garage to get equipment, you know, you've got gas flowing out of all these houses, and then they're coming through shutting mains and different stuff down. So what happens if one of those generators is on, you know?
Natural gas.
Whatever. Well, you're out of business.
Okay.
So it was easier to run diesel trucks, you know, or diesel, the fuel trucks around Philston than it was.
And I know you can dual fuel, gas and natural gas, but you can't diesel in here?
But you have to switch.
I mean, you, so you can run the same engine off propane and diesel?
You can run diesel, propane, yeah.
I didn't know that.
Well, thanks for looking into that. I think that's important that that, that's corrected.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel comment? Come on up, sir. Just come up to the podium here and let us know your name and where you live, if you would. It's, I think it's a three minute time limit.
I'm John Marchbanks, I live right behind the town council building.
Sorry, I didn't understand your last name.
Marchbanks, M-A-R-C-H-B-A-N-G. And it's my first town council meeting, so I follow this as a forum. I just wanted to ask a question about if the town council pursues any of the funding that's available to the infrastructure bill for federal grants to assist with the roundabout or the improvements to the sewer.
Of the sewer treatment plant? I believe we have applications in for multiple of those grants. Carmen could probably give you a little more detailed answer, but I know that we are seeking.
We're kind of like, there's many different buckets of funding opportunities and I'm just looking at town, you know, funded through our budget and that. So like in the fall, when you're in October, we're looking at applying for MPO.